It is six o'clock. Good evening, everybody. We will call the city council meeting to order on May ninth, 2023 at six o'clock. Brenda, are you ready for a prayer?
Yes, ma'am.
Pledge?
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who is with us now in this very room. We thank you for making each of us, every person we meet, every citizen of this city, in your own image with dignity and infinite worth. We thank you for the calling you have given us to be good stewards of your creation, to love our neighbors as ourselves. We are thankful tonight for your gift of council member Kim Clarkson. Bless her and keep her as she leaves us tonight. Help us to retain her thoughtfulness and insight, gifts she gave us through you, Lord. We pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put the interests of others above our own. May we act with love for the common good. May we be good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person here. We thank you again for this council, our mayor, our city staff, our first responders, and all those who work to make this place we call home such a wonderful city. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brenda. Announcements, Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to everybody tonight. We've got a lot of recognitions and proclamations coming up, so I know that's exciting.
It's a good night.
It is a good night. We have a few announcements before we get started, and there's quite a few here, so I'm going to go through them pretty quickly. But tomorrow morning, May tenth, seven to nine a.m. at McDonald's in Sidney Baker North, and I believe that's the one closest to the highway, Coffee with a Cop. We encourage everyone to come out. I don't know if you've done one of these before, but it's a great opportunity to meet our officer and have a good cup of coffee. I'm not a big coffee drinker, but I do like McDonald's coffee. So encourage everybody to come up there and say hello in the morning. All right, a day later, Thursday, May eleventh, five thirty p.m. at the Deert Center, we have a solar eclipse question and answer session. We have, for those of you who don't know, and at this point I'm beginning to wonder if anybody doesn't, but we do have two solar eclipses coming up. We have an annual solar eclipse on October fourteenth of this year, and then we have the total solar eclipse on April eighth of 2024 next year. And both of those events are going to offer tremendous opportunities for Curville, but they're also going to offer some equally big challenges. So this is an opportunity for our citizens to come and ask questions and answers. Ashley Boyle from the Parks and Recreation Department will be there along with Chief McCall and Chief Maloney from the Police and Fire Departments. They should be able to answer questions that you have. It's going to be a good Q and A session, so I encourage everyone who's interested to come out and see that. All right, Friday is the big day. This will be the annual Guns in the Hoses game. Friday, May twelfth, starts at six o'clock at Tybee Antler Stadium. This is the annual grudge match between the KPD and the KFD. It's the fifth time that these two teams have met. The series is tied two to two, so there's a lot riding on it. I saw the Curville Fire Department practicing, I think it was Sunday night. They look pretty good, Chief. There is no charge, but I think ask for a five dollar donation or more at the door, and then it goes to charity.
Is it a rain or shine event?
Well, I guess it depends on how hard it's raining. If it's lightning, no. But that's a lot of fun, so I encourage everybody to come out. Fun every year. All right, if you are interested in being a mystery fiction writer, the library Saturday, May thirteenth at two o'clock, they're hosting a mystery writers panel. And they have three writers who are going to be there, Sky Alexander, KP Gresham, and Laura Oles. And all of them have written mystery series, so they're going to be doing a question and answer thing at two o'clock and talking about what it takes to write a mystery series. If you're interested in something like that, please come by. Parks activities, we have Saturday night Movies in the Park, which is Minions, The Rise of Gru, and that's going to be at Curville Shrunner Park, starts at dark. And then the very next day, Sunday, May fourteenth, Mother's Day special. Don't forget, Sunday's Mother's Day. I believe it's Mothers Getting Free with a Child Luncheon, so take advantage of that. A great place to visit out there, Curville Shrunner Park. And then finally, two more activities that are going on this weekend. Curville Police Department is having a five K Saturday morning, and that starts at seven o'clock, Louise Hayes Park. And I love the, it's a free five K, no prizes, no medals, no shirts, no nothing, just show up. And then if you survive that, because seven's pretty early in the morning, Curville Fire Department will be hosting a blood drive starting at nine o'clock and run until two p.m. at the Curville Walmart. We encourage anybody who wants to take, come by and give some blood for that, too. I think you get a free T-shirt with that. And I believe that you had an announcement with that, so that'll do it for me.
Thank you, Stewart.
Chief?
Thank you. So one add to the blood drive, so this is the first blood drive we've been able to host at the Curville Fire Department in over eight years. And so we're excited to get that started again. It'll be Walmart this Saturday, but this is no normal blood drive. So as you know, in early March, we were able to start carrying whole blood on our ambulance and be able to provide that out in the field. So whole blood is provided to us and thirty-six other EMS and hospitals through what they call a Heroes in Arms program. So the Heroes in Arms program, currently, you have to go to a fixed facility, Bernie or San Antonio, and you're able to donate if you are O positive and low titer. So a specific group can actually donate to that program. So they are doing a pilot program with the Curville Fire Department to do a mobile blood bank that they're coming in, and you can actually see if you're eligible to donate to the Heroes in Arms program. So if you are O positive, they will test you, you will donate, they will also take another tube to test to see if you are low titer. So what does that mean to us? It means that potentially you could be donating whole blood to the Curville Fire Department within three days. We could actually have it on the rainbows out there and save a life. So we've administered three units of whole blood over the last three months, so since March.
Is it just O positive you're looking for?
Strictly O positive for the whole blood program. And so that they, that they're looking for, you have to be low titer, so low antibodies also for that. And so they do that test also. So I'm excited, I'm on O positive. I will find out whether I'm low titer, so.
I'm not O positive.
But I just wanted to say to pass out everyone else, there'll be a press release. We just heard about that last week, so did want to share us that. Very exciting news for us here at the Curville Fire Department. So thank you.
Awesome. All right. Thank you, Chief. That's great. Council, anyone have an announcement that you would like to make? All right, we will move on to presentations, and this is exciting tonight. We have one, two, three, four, five of them, and we have a lot of people with us tonight. So let's start with commendations for Kayla, the Curville Area Youth Leadership Academy. And here they come. Okay, oh, whoops. You need two more. That's great, you're all here, that's great. All right, yes, this is Megan Fulker, I was going to say it wrong. And Megan has been their advisor through the year, and she's going to tell you a little bit about the program before we give you your certificates.
So these are the six students that we had participate in our Curville Area Youth Leadership Academy. We open this up to students in the county who are interested in learning more about city government. So this year, we have six students. It's a seven-month-long program that just introduces them to city government, how different volunteer opportunities that you participate in, as well as touring city facilities and just hearing presentations from different departments on what it is that they do.
I'm going to read your commendation once and then present it to each of you, okay? City of Curville commendation is hereby presented to, and we'll have all of your names in just a minute, whereas this individual has served as a member of the Curville Area Youth Leadership Academy with the date of service beginning October thirteenth, 2022, and whereas they have served faithfully and dutifully on said board. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Curville, Kerr County, Texas, that all of these individuals be recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Curville Area Youth Leadership Academy, and that on behalf of the citizens of Curville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and the community. And it has the date that this was passed and approved, which is today, excuse me, and it was signed by all of the city council members. So, all right, Riley, Riley Paxton, congratulations and thank you. And Graceland, is it Gurin? All right, congratulations and thank you. Peter Lockwood, must be you. All right, and thank you. Corbin Lofton is not here?
Oh, right here.
Oh, here you are, all right. I'm sorry, thank you. All right, we appreciate it. Ellie Harper, congratulations, thank you. And Madison, last one, thank you, we appreciate it. Would you guys, any of you have anything you'd like to say about the program and what it has done for you, what you've gained from it?
I have a few words I'd like to say.
Okay.
First of all, I would like to thank Megan for all of the organizing of all of the events that she's done for us, and I would like to thank her for guiding us along our journey about learning about what goes on in our city. And I appreciate everyone that allowed us into their facilities to learn more about what they do, and I'm overall just appreciative that I got this experience.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, well, turn around and shake the hand of a council member. And let's give them a round of applause.
Give us some pictures, guys.
Pictures.
Everybody look this way. We're good, thanks.
Okay, all right. Thank you all. And when will the next one start, Megan?
Our applications open in August.
August, okay, all right. And we'll announce that when that time comes, so. All right, we have, every, all of our proclamations tonight are vitally important. They have to do with safety, they have to do with, one, the one that's coming up is childcare, and what's our other one? Mental health awareness. Mental health. And all of these affect our community tremendously. And if we didn't have all of these people coming in now for childcare, we'd be in a world of hurt. And we don't have enough of you. Come in, and I know we've got a lot of you, and this is wonderful. All right, come on in. Okay, come on, we probably maybe make two rows. Come on in, and we'll just have you go down the line here. This is just absolutely wonderful. All right, now I'm going, when we finish, I'm going to read the proclamation, but then I'm going to ask all of you, if you'll all be patient, to introduce yourself, tell us who you are working with and how long you have been in the business, okay? All right, so we'll start off with City of Curville proclamation. Whereas childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on May twelve, two thousand twenty-three, or twenty twenty-three, and whereas childcare centers provide a safe nurturing place for the enrichment and development of millions of children nationwide and are a vital force in our economy. And whereas the City of Curville recognizes that childcare centers are a lifeline for families and are indispensable for the well-being and economic security of a community. And whereas childcare programs are still recovering from financial and workforce hardships stemming from the pandemic, but continue to meet the needs of children and families. And whereas the future depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today, support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore, I, Judy Eitner, Mayor of the City of Curville, Texas, do hereby proclaim Friday, May twelve, 2023, as childcare provider appreciation day here in Curville, Texas, and I encourage all citizens to join me in celebrating childcare providers and other educators of young children everywhere. So we just say, thank you, thank you, thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Now, before I have you introduce yourselves, is Katie here? I thought she was. Katie, come up here. Katie is with the Kerr Economic Development Corporation, and Katie has been working very, very hard, oh, six months or so, doing, tell us what you're doing.
Goodness, this way or this way?
Both ways.
Thank you, Mayor Judy, and thank you all for your hard work and everything that you do. I know it's not easy what you do day in and day out, and I've been learning a lot about what you do over the last six months, as the mayor said. So in economic development, we have been working to identify some of the challenges that you guys face on a daily basis and to try to help support you guys going forward so that we can continue to have the thriving community that we enjoy. Were there some specifics from the childcare stuff?
From here, or just, just some things that you have been working with?
Well, it was interesting, one of the things that we uncovered when we had an opportunity to interview many of the childcare providers, when we were talking about how do we expand childcare in our community, and how do we serve more working families, and how do we give these young children the early childhood experience that they need to have? And one of the things that became a complexity is that many employers are reporting that labor is their number one challenge, and the childcare providers are also reporting that labor is their number one challenge. So we've been working really hard to identify some creative solutions that are sustainable for our community and to come alongside you guys and give you the tools and resources that you need in order to expand and thrive and continue to serve our community.
And Katie's been working with the Texas Workforce, Governor's Office, she's put together a committee looking at what you do, what you, resources you need, that kind of thing. So we thank you for your work, and keep it up. We will continue to need it, so thank you, appreciate it. Okay, now, let's start over here, give us your name.
Cynthia Smith, I work for Tybee Childcare Development Center, the ECC. I've been with the district for five years, but I've worked in childcare since nineteen ninety.
Wow, thank you.
Thelma Lopez, and I also work for Cynthia, T C D C. I have been with K I S D for three years, but been doing it for twelve years.
Thank you.
Sarah Santos, I currently work at Little Safari Learning Center. I've been there exactly one year today, but I've done childcare since I was nineteen years old.
Congratulations on your one-year anniversary.
Tanya Poe from Little Safari Learning Center. And I've been doing it since two thousand and eight.
Diane Arnett from Zion Lutheran Children's Center. I've been there four years, but I've been in childcare for ten.
Jessica Russell, I'm with Zion Lutheran Children's Center. I've been in childcare for fifteen years and at Zion for ten.
My name is Xenia Velasquez, and I work with Zion Lutheran Children's Center, and I will be there for a year next month.
Nina Ramirez, I work for Zion Children's Center, and I've been there for almost a year in July.
Heather Smith with Zion Lutheran Children's Center, I've been there seven months.
Regina Behrens, I've worked with Zion Lutheran, and I've been there exactly two years.
Stacy Pollard, I've been with Zion Lutheran for twenty years.
Personal note, I'm with a child school starting center, been there fourteen years and childcare for twenty.
I'm Shawnee Henderson, I work at Zion Lutheran, and it will be four years in November.
I am Shaien Duarte, I have worked at Zion Lutheran Children's Center, and I've been there a year.
Priscilla Howser, I work at Zion Lutheran Children's Center, I've been there for seventeen years.
Faith Wright, I've been at Zion for about three months, but I've been in childcare for about four years.
Sarah Sheets, I've been at a child's place for twenty-one years.
I'm Anna Robles, I've been at a child's place for nine years.
Paisley Pennington, I've been at a child's place for six months, but in the industry since I was sixteen.
Lori Ayala, I am working for T C D C and ECC, and I've been there for four months, but have been in childcare for fifteen years.
And I'm Kathy Morrow Ingram, I've been in childcare for forty-three years. In the last twenty-seven years, I've been at K I S D's Tybee Child Development Center.
You need a star. Miss Kathy, Miss Kathy lives on both my books. I think we have two, two. You last year.
I'm Grace Parker, I also work at Tybee Child Development Center. I've been there for five years, and I've worked in childcare for ten-ish, feels like forever.
I'm Yorrelli Ortega, I've been in childcare for about five years, but I've worked with T C D C for two years.
Well, my hat goes off to all of you. It's what you do is so, so, so vitally important, and we just, we can't say thank you enough. So shake the hand of a council person and. It's like my kids have gone to her, my grandkids have gone to her. Yes, hey, how are you? Good to see you. I know, they're everywhere.
They're sending you a picture.
Yes, a big picture. Yes. They're going to take your picture out front, okay? Because there are so many of you, they'll be able to get a better. All right, our next group, a group we can't do without, a group we love, National Police Week. All right, this is great, this is great. You guys don't keep kids, little kids every day, but what you do for us is just as important. So thank you, thank you. City of Curville proclamation, whereas, oh, we've still got some more coming, I'm sorry. All right, we have everybody, we think, okay, very good. City of Curville proclamation, whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Curville Police Department, Ingram Police Department, Kerr County Sheriff's Department, Texas Department of Public Safety, and other surrounding agencies. And whereas, since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-five law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. The names of these dedicated public servants are engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. And five hundred and fifty-six new names of fallen heroes are being added this spring, including two hundred and twenty-four officers killed in twenty twenty-two and three hundred and thirty-two officers killed in previous years. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's thirty-fifth candlelight vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas, May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I, Judy Eitner, Mayor of the City of Curville, Texas, do hereby proclaim May nine through twenty as National Police Week in Curville, Texas, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation, in honor of the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. We thank all of you. Is there anything you would like to say before we have everybody introduce themselves?
Sure, next week is Police Week, and we wanted to start the week on Monday morning, right out here in front of City Hall with the police memorial ceremony at ten a.m. We'd invite the public to come and join us for a short ceremony out in front of City Hall in Flagfall.
Want you to introduce yourself, tell us what organization you're with, if, I think most of you are probably the same ones.
My name is Colton Willoughby, I've been with the Curville Police Department for four years.
I'm Gerald Haley, and I've been with the Curville Police Department for about a hot minute.
Some of you probably have not met our new Assistant Chief, so this is him, and we are delighted to have you with us. Thank you.
I'm Donald Kelly, I've been with the department for five months.
A newbie?
Yes.
All right.
My name is John Luis Rodriguez, I've been with the Curville Police Department for five months.
Another newbie, all right.
I'm Mary Krebs, I've been with them going on seventeen years.
John decline, I've been with the Curville Police Department for almost eighteen years.
Martin Morris, Curville P.D., with twenty-two years.
Do we have any families here? Do some of you have family? Anybody? I wanted to bring them up to have them. Again, we just, we love you guys, you're out here today for us, and we just, we can't say thank you enough. All right, shake a hand, and then we'll take a picture. Thank you for all you do. Thank you so much. Welcome to K P V. Appreciate you being here, you know. Yeah, yeah, right there, uh-huh, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
I have a question for the newbie, where did you come from?
I was over there in Kennedy, Texas, four years prior.
I was at Bear County Sheriff's Office, I did corrections for two years.
Oh, okay, all right. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we cozy up for pictures. Cozy, cozy up. I'm in front. All right.
Thank you.
Good, great. Thank you all. Thank you, thank you. All right, our next one is, is another one of those names that reflects all of us every day, not in just our community, but all over the nation. Mental Health Month and will all of our people who are associated, I don't know if they're out there or in here. All right, do you know of anybody else that's with you?
What's here is here.
City of Kerrville proclamation, whereas, mental health is part of overall individual health. One in five adults experience a mental health problem in any given year and one in 25 adults live with mental illness such as major depression, bipolar disorder, or schizophrenia. And whereas, approximately one half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14, that's frightening, and three quarters by the age of 24. Long delays, sometimes decades, often occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals get help. Early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery. It's important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental illness to get help when it is needed. And whereas, every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. Public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now therefore I, Judy Eitner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Month, right here in Kerrville, Texas, to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote identification and treatment of mental illness. And be it further resolved that all citizens, businesses, schools, community organizations are encouraged to take the Stigma Free Pledge. And there's a website, www.nami, which is the group you are associated with, dot org slash stigma free, in observance of Mental Health Awareness Month. And it's been signed by me. We're delighted to have you, I know you guys meet, tell us, whoever wants to be the spokesman, tell us a little about your organization.
Well, NAMI is the National Alliance on Mental Illness. And it's headquartered in Virginia, there are over 600 affiliates throughout the country and there is a state branch of NAMI in 49 states. So, NAMI Kerrville was started in 1989 and we are the local affiliate for this area, although there are several affiliates. There's a larger one in San Antonio and in other communities. Now, what we do is we offer support, education, and advocacy for anyone that needs assistance, either with a family member or as an individual with mental health illness. And so, we look to increase our membership so that we can get more of our programs. There are many established programs that NAMI National offers to help educate and support individuals with mental illness. With the main thrust is that they are not alone and that they can receive help. And that's who we are. With me is a board member, my wife, Joy Morales, Pam Khan, and Mr. Ed Rendon. And I am Willie Morales.
And you meet on?
We meet on the Thursday, Thursday of every month. It's at 6 p.m., usually at the Detert Center. And we welcome anyone that has a family member with this condition or seeks more information. And so we can welcome you at any time. We offer a short sharing care period and subsequent to that, we usually have a program, a speaker, to get more of the information out to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, we'll get a picture first, are you ready for pictures and then we'll have them shake hands. All right, thank you, thank you. Six o'clock, okay, thank you for all you do. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
We're discovering, you have very important topics in our community. The last one is Building Safety Month. And will all of you who are a part of that please come up? You guys, I think you're kind of unsung heroes. I don't think you get lots of accolades out in the field. I think that as code enforcers, you're not the, you don't get the first mile maybe when you go to, go to safety.
We approach with you, as we may if we don't.
But what you do is just as important as what is going on with these other groups. And if our buildings aren't safe, if you don't say, it doesn't meet our code and there are safety issues, we all suffer from that. So we thank you for being here. City of Kerrville proclamation, whereas, the City of Kerrville recognizes that a component of a city's growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas, our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant building, safety, and fire prevention officials and others in the construction industry who work year round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, quote, "Safety for all, building codes in action," quote, the theme for Building Safety Month 2023 encourages all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, and energy conference, conservation. And whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore I, Judy Eitner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Building Safety Month, right here in Kerrville, Texas, and encourage citizens to learn about the importance of building codes and high safety standards in minimizing risks wherever possible and creating a safe environment in our homes and our community. Give us your name, tell us how long you've been doing what you're doing.
I'm Jason McMurray, I've been a building inspector with Development Services for five years.
All right, native to Kerrville?
Yes, and before that, the New Braunfels area.
Okay, all right.
I'm Max, the Director of Planning and Development of the city for six years.
The chair, so all right.
Guillermo Garcia, Executive Director over Development Services, and I've been with the city six years.
Okay, very good. Anything you guys would like to add to, to this?
I think it all sums it up very well.
All right, all right, very good. Well, we appreciate you very, very much and, and I know what you do is not easy. You're the bad guy and that isn't, that is.
They're the good guys.
What's that?
You're the good guys.
All right, let's get a picture and we'll let you shake hands. All right, shake a hand. All right, thank you all for your patience, these were all great things to acknowledge, so we appreciate it. All right, council, we are ready for visitors and citizens forum, Shelley, do we have anyone?
Yes ma'am, we have two.
Okay.
Portia Watkins.
Portia, if you'll go to that microphone right in front of you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm just gonna read my letter, make it easier, because I'm not a public speaker and I'm scared to death.
We don't bite.
Yes, I said, my name is Portia Watkins and I live in Kerrville. I was praying the other night about all the school shootings in school and what might be the best way to stop them. By the way, the subject is the school shootings. And at that moment, it seemed like the Lord told me that the best way to stop all the school shootings was to have a canine officer with his dog in each school. Everybody is afraid of a dog bite. And it seems to me that only one dog with an officer were in each school, it would be of, it would be a lot more cost effective than anything else. The dogs used could be rescue dogs and trained by the police department, like they train their dogs for drugs and weapons and et cetera. The minute someone came into the school with a weapon, the dog would sense it and the officer could order his dog to attack and that would be the end of the threat with no loss of the life. And then, I really do not know how much it would cost to train these dogs, but it seems like it would be a lot cheaper than paying an officer to be in the school every day, full time. And God forbid the cost of the lives of more children. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nikki Kane.
Hi Nikki Kane, so I live here in the city, Madam Mayor and Council, I'm here tonight with an inquiry and then a question. The inquiry is because exactly six months ago, November 8th of 2022, the situation with the library came up and it was a very boisterous meeting. There were a lot of people who voiced their opinions, you received a petition with over 1,400 people. At the end of that agenda item, Madam Mayor, you made a motion and it was seconded by Councilman Hughes that made a requirement of the Library Association, the Advisory Board, to review policy, whatnot, whatnot, and get back to you. And so my inquiry is, it hasn't happened yet and I do know that the, the first regular meeting they had had to be rescheduled, it was. And when we attended, they said that that item could not be addressed because they had two new people on their board. If, correct me if I'm not, I think there's five people on that advisory board and the most recent scheduled meeting was canceled again because they couldn't even get a quorum. So I guess my question is, is it going to be addressed? And I know, Madam Mayor, you did not set a time limit, but can the voters expect anything, anytime soon? Thank you.
It's up to the library board to get back to us and we'll, when that happens, it will happen.
And that's the end of the citizen speakers.
All right, thank you. All right, we now are at the consent agenda item, council. And is there anyone on council or in the audience who wishes to pull an item? I am going to pull the first item and we need to vote on it, of course, but I would also like, I think that it would be, because it's a, has to do with migratory bird day. I think we have some people here, do you have anyone here with migratory bird day? Yes, okay, all right, very good. I think that what I'd like to do is maybe have one of you come to the, well, let's, I'll tell you what. Let's, we'll save that, just a second, let's vote on what we've got in the consent agenda and then we'll take care of that.
May I, I'll make the motion that we approve consent agenda items 4B and 4C.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand, it is unanimous. And did you vote, Kim?
I did.
Yes, okay, I didn't see your hand. All right, very good. All right, now let's go to the resolution. And is there anyone, would you like to start it off? Okay.
So this resolution was brought to us as a request from the organization that is put together. They're seeking to become a Bird City, Texas designated city. They've been working on this, when they approached us with this, with this resolution, it is actually one of the many criteria that they have to actually go through in order to get the designation. It's just one small point of their things. And so we, we said that we would work with them and try to get this resolution passed properly. Ultimately, they really need a standing resolution that will take it through. So it's every second Saturday of the May, the way this one's written right now, it's just for this year. So we do have some representatives from the organization that is sitting and I'm sure they have, they would love to speak to you.
Okay, all right. Who would like to be first?
I'd be happy to speak on behalf of the group that's preparing an application for Bird City, Texas.
And introduce yourself, please.
My name is Chris Distel, I'm a biology professor at Shriner University and I'm on the, the group that's organizing Bird City, Texas. Migratory birds are a vitally important part of Texas's natural heritage and natural history. Everybody benefits from birds, whether we realize it or not. Some people appreciate them for pleasure, some for food and sport, some for things that we don't see quite as easily, like pollination and seed dispersal. But birds here in Texas and internationally are disappearing, they're declining. Getting more Texans aware of what's happening with birds, what birds we have, what birds are, are part of our stories, what birds are part of our history, is really the core of World Migratory Bird Day. This is a growing movement that's come out of small pockets of folks interested in migratory birds. It's grown and grown nationally, internationally, to the Western Hemisphere and, and now it's taken off to the whole world. And we're really excited at the prospect of the City of Kerrville designating World Migratory Bird Day and, and making it an annual celebration as, as part of the community. I can say for one, that if this, if this is approved, one of the things we'll do at Shriner University at the field station is have a celebration each year where we educate and open to the public opportunities to learn about birds, opportunities to see birds, opportunities to engage with our community in a, in a way beyond just the folks here, but, but into nature as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any? All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to say anything?
I'm Katie Capital, I live in Kerrville. I'm a master naturalist among other things. And we talk about the eclipse, but every spring, we have an eclipse of birds coming. This is, we are in the flyway. The birds are coming back from South America and heading to the north, come through here. And there are loads of people that are birding all the time. So I think it's just completely appropriate that we celebrate Migratory Bird Day here in, in Kerrville.
All right, thank you. All right, council, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution number 14-2023.
All right, do we have a second? We have a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous and passed, so thank you for bringing that to our attention, we appreciate it. All right, that takes care of the consent agenda, we are ready for 5A. We are ready for 5A. And who is going to get us started? Megan, thank you.
Agreement between the city of Kerrville, Texas and the Kerrville Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc. for oversight of the community arts program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to talk about the proposed community arts program agreement with KCBB. And this is just a follow-up from the workshop that we had last month regarding this program. Maybe we'll begin. Okay, so first off, I just wanted to highlight again that it is a identified Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan priority by the community as well as a fiscal year 2023 key program priority that you all set. So the purpose of the community arts program is to promote, encourage, and sustain the development of arts and culture in Kerrville. We have asked the CBB to have some deliverables based on this agreement. So every year, they are going to report how they are doing public art installations, promoting art education, developing selection guidelines, and adopting a funding policy to remain sustainable. So the funding mechanisms that were identified was the pledge that was received from the Community Foundation of the Texas Hill Country, which we talked about last time. It's $300,000 that will be distributed over three years. Staff's recommending that we do community continued hot funding support to supplement the gap. Their estimated annual operating budget is $225,000. And something that they are going to be tasked to do is to seek outside funding through other philanthropic efforts and grant funding. So the payment schedule that we have outlined within the agreement is an initial payment of $25,000 from the remaining budgeted allocation that we have in hot funding for public art. There is, was $60,000 that was budgeted in this fiscal year for the Arts Marketing Co-op, which they have already received. So year one for the program is $225,000. That will be paid on or before the 31st of this year. Year two, $225,000 again, and we are wanting to pay that in two equal payments. And same with year three. So we just also wanted to outline that years one through three will be a combination of grant funding and hot funds. It won't be all hot funds. The recommended action tonight is to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute an agreement with KCBB for this community arts program. Do you all have any questions?
Council?
Can you go back and explain the payments? So, and I'm reading Article 1 here on the initial payment, Section A, subsection 1, I guess. It says that the initial payment is $40,000, which is the, from the remaining 15 that's already owed to them per the current agreement, plus 25. So is it actually 25 or are we looking at more than 25? I'm trying to figure out where that, where I'm missing that.
So the 25 portion is specifically been allocated for public art. The $60,000, which in your, that you just mentioned was the 15, that was just left over from their current existing agreement. So that's already been, has already been paid, Julie?
Well, our quarter four still has to be paid. We pay that in fourth quarter, so.
Right.
Essentially, we owe them $15,000 more. The $25,000 is set aside within hot as public art installation that would be then rerouted.
Okay, so, okay, I get that. So when we're talking about this agreement, it's just the 25, the existing agreement that is already in place, really, that's the other 15 that we're going to be still taking over.
Yes.
Okay. And then, there was one other thing. Oh, oh, no, no, any question, but just something that would benefit me as a council member. I understand this agreement replaces the old agreement in its entirety. It'd be beneficial if that could, if we're going to replace an existing agreement or if we're making any changes to an agreement and only a portion of that agreement is shown in our agenda, that we also have the existing one that's going to be either completely terminated or that we're making amendments to, that way we can get kind of the full picture. I was able to find it after some digging, but that way I can see what changes are we really making, just to give me a better picture. But besides that, that's it, that's my only question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, anything?
No.
Okay. All right, then, are we ready for a vote? You have a question?
No, I just wanted, I just wanted to thank Shelley for, for providing the previous agreement so I could compare those two before tonight, but that's it.
We had no speakers, Shelley?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, then, are we ready for a motion? Please.
I'll make it. Authorize the city manager to finalize and execute an agreement with the KCBB for community arts program.
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Think it's going to be a great program, Megan. I look forward to seeing what you guys bring back to us.
And thank you, Julie, over there in the corner.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie, yes. Did you want to say anything, Julie? I forgot to ask you.
I'm okay, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, we are ready for 5B. And Shelley?
General event promotion contract between the CE Group, Inc. and the city of Kerrville for the Kerrville River Festival and annual eclipse celebration in the amount of $110,000. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Okay. All right, Deidre.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is my first time presenting to you guys, so please be kind. So this, this item is an event contract with the CE Group for the 2023 Kerrville River Festival and Annular Eclipse Celebration. This hits on key priority areas of the Kerrville 2050 Plan, parks, open spaces, and river corridors. It also keys on guiding principles of providing recreational opportunities for people of all ages and abilities, both residents and tourists. And also action item, enhanced park programming and public gathering and events. So a little bit of an overview on the event. The Kerrville River Festival is a celebration of Kerrville's culture and heritage. It's a free event that we do annually, which has live music and also has interactive programming and different kinds of things. We do a kids zone, exhibitor booths, also food, and all kinds of fun stuff. This year, we have a unique opportunity to include some solar eclipse programming as we have the Annular Solar Eclipse that's happening on the same day, October 14th of 2023. And this event will take place in Louise Hayes Park. So the history on the event, the Kerrville River Festival started in 2019 and it was geared as a celebration for Kerrville's 130th year as a municipal corporation. Kind of started in 2019 with 100, about 1,500 people. We have grown to over 7,500 people with this event. Some kind of things, some activities that we do. We do have a kids zone at this event. We do carnival games, we have a rock wall out there, we do some inflatables. This year, we're looking to add some eclipse activities. As you all know, we're very lucky to have NASA kind of coming and sharing their time with us as live streaming the Annular Eclipse, which they will also be assisting in providing additional activities as well as speakers to kind of give some education on the eclipse and the, as we have the bigger eclipse coming in October. And we'll also have a mobile planetarium. We have other activities as well. We have food trucks, food vendors. We also have free shuttles that run from the Shriner University as well as the parking garage to kind of drop people off at the event. And we also, we also bring in local community programming and vendors and stuff like that. So like Tybee will come out, their band will perform, and then we'll bring some other additionals in as well. Live music's a big part of this. Last year, we had Kyle Park and it was a great success. Like I said, this is a very free event, very family friendly. We're very careful on who we choose to perform, so that it's family friendly. The Annular Solar Eclipse is a partial eclipse technically. There will be a ring of fire around the, around the sun, moon kind of co-operation. Their maximum annularity, that's kind of a weird word, annularity, will be at 11:52 a.m. So this event will actually start a little earlier than typical. The eclipse, safety glasses are required to be worn during the duration of the eclipse for safety reasons. And this will be a minimal community disruption expected. So we don't expect the big mass that we're expecting in October. Eclipse programming will be incorporated into this event and this is a huge lead up to the big event in October, in April of 2024. So we are seeking to enter into an agreement with a production company, the CE Group. We did solicit with a request for proposals. We, CE Group was our sole proposer. And based on their qualifications and the evaluation criteria that we had, they fit everything that we needed. They have been in existence for 30 years and planning and promoting different events around San Antonio. They've done some big stuff. They have several credentials that made them a key thing that we were looking for as well. And we have a previous relationship with them as well. They actually helped plan the Buttholesworth Memorial Library 50th Anniversary Celebration, which I believe was a huge success, so. This is the scope of service that we're looking at. This is CE's key responsibilities. They will really be responsible for bringing in the artists and performers, all that has to go to do with that. There's a lot of work that goes on behind that. Event equipment, such as stages, sound lighting equipment, those kind of things. They'll be handling all of that as well. Dealing with the vendors, food vendors, other vendors, managing the event timeline essentially, putting the criteria and all that together. They'll be doing all the marketing out of town as well as doing site maps, permits, and all the other stuff that takes a lot of time out of our days that are, that helps us kind of break things up a little bit. Also be responsible for setup, cleanup, and day-to-day of event operations. Other scope of service, this is the, our responsibilities, our key responsibilities, obviously, is to quality control everything that CE is doing. We get final approval on artists, we get final approval on performances and activities. We are responsible for kids zone and kids zone activities. We get final approval for all creative graphics, any type of promotional materials that comes from CE. We are vets, we are responsible for event sponsorships on our end. We also are responsible for signage in the park and leading up to any rain insurance that's, that we purchase. Emergency management, which we work very closely with PD and Fire on that. And then staff day-to-day, trash control barricades, monitoring, those kinds of things. All the little things that we're not expecting CE to do that we do on a regular basis. This is the budget. The general fund budget is $16.5, which goes for all the key things that we are responsible for, event signage, kids activities, rain insurance, local marketing, those kinds of things. This is the same as it was last year. We did increase the hot fund budget to $113. This actually covers all the vendor, the production costs for the company, the fees, the entertainment, and all the, I just noticed that we have a typo in here, so I apologize. The hard costs. So tent, stage, any equipment that we have to, to put, that all comes from that key amount of money. And the total event budget is $129.5. CE's contract actually came in under what we were looking at, so it came in at $110. And that's what our not, not to exceed item, number is right now. So our recommendation that we have is that staff recommends authorizing the city manager to finalize and execute an event promotion agreement as presented. Do we have any questions for me?
Are you guys going to be ready for all of this?
We're as ready as we can be. We are excited at the opportunity, for sure.
Other questions, staff or council, I'm sorry?
No.
I don't.
I did have a couple of things. I'm sorry, can you clarify why we went from $110 to $113?
It's costs of everything has gone up and we really just wanted to be prepared to make sure that we had enough in the bank to be able to cover everything.
Okay. I'm curious, it's actually funny that Ms. Julie is still here. Because I was wondering, have we contacted or been in touch with the Convention and Visitors Bureau to figure out if they would have some type of role or partnership in this?
I mean, we work very closely with them on lots of things, so I'm assuming that, we, we do talk to them about everything.
Well, more of like in the, in the funding role of it, right? Because what I'm looking at is, it seems that this is going to be a lot of, it's really because we're trying to drive visitors and, and people here, which, not saying I have a problem with, but a lot of it is the marketing and promoting of the event, which I know we have PR for that right now. And I was, it's funny because I was looking through my paperwork and one of the main things in the mission statement of the CBB is to be the marketing organization for Kerrville and to promote and market Kerrville for visitors, conventions, and destinations and attracting them to be here for different events and type of things. So I'm wondering, why is the city looking at putting this up if we haven't really, if, if we haven't? That's what I'm wondering.
So we cross promote with the CBB all the time. We cross promote everything. They put, they, they utilize their website, we utilize our website, we do all that cross promotion. We, we want to be responsible for our own promotion and our own marketing so that we know that the, the image and the perception that we want to be out about our programming is out there. So that's kind of our, I think our goal is to make sure that we're presenting ourselves in the way that we want to present ourselves. Not that the CBB can't do that job by any means, but that I think we want to control that, that narrative, so.
And I think, go ahead.
Is that because like it's, is the city's logo or city's, like how is that?
City's logo, city, Parks and Rec logo, all goes on there.
Okay, so.
So we need to be able to control what's going out.
Sure, okay. So I think I would have just taken a look at is, we probably even could have had some three-way type of agreement where if it's possible for the CBB to contribute financially in this area and that the city still has a role in terms of management with the planner. That's what I, that's what I would have thought we could have taken a look at. I would love to go through just a quick couple of things. On page three, Article seven, number, or letter A, it says the, I think that's supposed to be the promoter agrees, but I haven't read anything about a promoter, and so that may be planner? The planner agrees to do that?
Yeah, so we did change some of the language and it went from promoter to planner as per request of CE, so we may have missed a, a couple in there.
That's okay, are there other changes that we're not aware of?
No, that was the only, that was the only change that came in that.
Okay, then the next one, page four and page five. One, under Article eight, the first section and then also in the subsection A refers to the owner. Is, I don't know who the owner is, there's not a definition for who the owner's supposed to be. And I'm not sure if maybe that's city or the owner of the company who's doing the planning?
Oh, that's a good question.
I would think the owner would be the city.
Usually there's a stipulation.
Okay, and then, okay, that's fine, I just want to make sure. And then five, page five, Article 11, subsection E, subsection B. It refers to, we're required to put these in when we go into an agreement with a third party. Planner does not boycott Israel and this says Arcadia will not boycott Israel. Are they included in this or?
No.
Okay. Okay, 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 there's really anything. So clarification on changing owner to city and then Arcadia to planner. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Well, and I think that this has been your event and that CBB does, they do their part. They help you out and help with advertising. But basically, this is your event and it needs to be under you. And if we went to a three-way, it, it gets very convoluted then as to who's doing what and, and that type of thing. So I think that it's.
I have a question, I have some questions, Mayor. If I'm not mistaken, this was really something that was born even before I was on council as far as being a issue that I believe, I believe, was it? Councilmember Vocal really wanted to have a city event, in a musical event that Kerrville put on every year. So if I remember correctly, maybe, maybe I don't, but is this our fourth, third or fourth year? Third?
We had one year, 2020, that it was canceled because of the pandemic. But it started in 2019 and it's occurred every year except for that 2020.
Okay, and so are we, are we funding this the same way that we funded it in the past or are we funding this differently?
It always, it has been a combination of both general funds and hotel motel taxes. And that has been around the same level of allocation.
And so for hot fund taxes, that's a 13% tax that we receive, correct? For people that stay in our hotels, is that the right number? And that has to be used for very specific.
7% for the city's allocation, the state has 6%.
Okay, and then what are the specific ways that we can use hot fund taxes?
It's essentially put heads and beds. And so events like this that bring visitors, and we've grown this event to be very tourist-centric, where we are drawing a lot of folks from outside the region that are coming to ultimately stay in our, in our hotels and our motels, as well as spending sales tax solid.
Now, we also use hot funds to help fund the CBB. Now, what we give to the CBB is their operational costs. And now we're working through renegotiating how we're helping the arts program. Um, and now we're working through renegotiating how we're helping the arts program, obviously, tonight. So their budget is specifically for the things that they've asked for, and that's what we approve through our annual budget. We give a certain amount of hot funds to CVB so that they can operate. We maintain the rest of the hot funds so that we can use those to promote tourism. Is that, is that, did I understand that correctly?
That's correct, and, and Julie can certainly elaborate, but the, the vast majority of that CVB funding is for broad marketing for Kerrville overall. You all recently saw their marketing campaign, uh, that they, they, they brought to you all, and the rebranding effort. Uh, but that's for broad marketing of Kerrville as a community to come and, and visit and drive tourism.
I mean, I guess I would, I would ask, so then, if, if we wanted to get money from the CVB, we'd really be giving them hot funds, and they'd be giving it back to us?
They're 100% funded, uh, other than a few things they sell in their, their offices. They're, they're predominantly funded by the city.
Okay, okay, I just, I just wanted to be clear on that, that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Correct.
Okay, um.
I have one comment.
Yes, please.
The logo that's on our screen, is that a clever use of the annular?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, it is. We, we did work on that a little bit to try to get that, thank you, appreciate that. It was a team effort.
We all blocked for the one in April, though.
Yeah, yes.
All right, do, uh, do we have a motion? I will move that we will authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the contract. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous, and.
Thank you guys very much, I appreciate you.
Congratulations on, and good luck here.
Thank you, we're looking forward to it. Thank you all very much. We don't have to see you all there?
Oh, I did have one question, have they named the, uh, the musical group?
We have not, we're still working on that.
You're working on that, okay. Thank you, Deidre. All right, um, I believe we have come to the end of our meeting. Um, is there anything that anyone would like to put on a future agenda at this time?
I would like to, um, as a future gen item, um, maybe look at how the city, uh, what the rules, what rules the city has in place for electioneering, and maybe work on upgrading or modifying those.
Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, second from Joe. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I don't understand what that, I don't understand it.
Um, I would just like to update the electioneering rules for, um, the city.
Like at the polling place? Okay, yeah, I was gonna say that, too.
Okay, if all in favor, raise your right hand, please. And it is unanimous?
Mayor?
Yes.
So, um, as you guys know as staff, and, and probably some are, some of you in the room know, um, next week, uh, as I understand it, council will be canvassing the votes. So if you're here, and you're not gonna be here next week where I'll say lots of things, um, I want to thank you guys for what you do every day for us. Y'all have, y'all make me look good. Um, I'm so proud to, to be able to call on you whenever I need to know something, and be able to make decisions knowing that I trust what you're telling me. Um, and of course, for all the citizens that are here tonight, thank you for your engagement as well. But I'll say a lot more things and probably cry next week, so I'll just stop there for tonight, so, thank you.
We're not saying goodbye, we're not.
No, I'm still gonna be here, I'll be here, just not here.
All right. At 7:14, we will adjourn.